Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, coming out of the executive session, we have a request on the table to waive fee or waive interest in late charges on a tax payment. And I would entertain a motion on that request that's on the table.
I would make the motion that we basically just rely on what the state statute says and that remedy as stated with our dates and everything as the county assessor has been doing in the past. Without any specifics, I don't know.
Is that clear enough to deny the request? Or does that answer your question or their question?
It answers mine. But I understand that.
I don't want to interpret anything else beyond that, other than what your policy and procedure is under the statute.
Follow Idaho code.
Think that works?
I think it still operates as a denial, so I think it would.
Okay. Okay. So with that, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Misty.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Shanda, next up. Buddy, you're on, oh no, Christie's on deck, so.
I can go after Buddy.
Alright, Buddy, you're on deck.
I'm gonna be here anyway.
Shanda Crystal, Chief Healthcare Officer. I have two items before the board today. The first one I'd like to start with is an invoice from Dioptra. So, back in April, they were asked to do a survey of flight aerial process and delivery to us for information regarding the feasibility study for the construction project and potentially moving Roden Bridge Corner, that whole stuff. As far as I understand, there were not identified funds exactly where this was going to be paid from, so I am before the board today to ask where. Christie has identified a couple of places for us and a discussion of where the board would like to pay this from.
We didn't really know this was gonna happen or that this had been requested. So, a couple options is the department who requested this could pay for it, since it really didn't have identified funds at the beginning. The other option is we can take it out of county operations, contract services, or we're gonna take the soil testing for the facility, or I guess we could take it out of the coroner's capital for the project. But in the future, it would be nice if funds could be identified prior to, this was just kind of an invoice that showed up on Shanda's desk.
For the overall project, which place would make sense, just from a transparency and everybody kind of track where it buys or ties into the project?
Any of the three that I gave you?
You all have a preference?
I mean, if we use the coroner's capital budget, that was initially for starting his, which is a small part of this whole thing.
About thirty-seven hundred dollars worth. I think that would be his portion.
Well, I mean, he's just one building.
Yeah.
And this flyover was for his building, the addition.
I know. I'm just being a smarty pants.
Those are capital funds. They're gonna be rebudgeted for next year, potentially. So, we could just take them out of there. The only difference is he'll sign off on that invoice instead of the commission or the planning director.
He'll be happy to sign off, says we're doing progress. I really don't care which department comes out, I hope they can.
You're the accountant. What are your thoughts?
Well, my first question that I would ask is, number one, who requested it? And the second question is, for what purpose? And that will determine where the money should come out of.
So, my part?
Oh, go ahead.
My understanding is that when it was tasked to do the feasibility study, that was with Hal Jensen, was kind of heading up that for the group, right? Because it does involve Roden Bridge Corner and planning and zoning. And then, and I'm not an expert in this area, but my understanding is this has been an aerial flight to then survey the property to say, right, what is ours? What can we work with? Kyle might be able to tell us better. You use a different word, elevations, is that the right?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
State your name for the record, please.
Kyle Grumester, Public Works Director. Yeah, that's kind of what, right off the bat, we need to kind of get an idea of water, power, elevations, how much, you know, where can we fit it and everything? And that was part of starting that master plan of where we could maybe put things besides just putting them on paper and drawing them in to try to get some elevations and some distances.
Sounds me like Kyle located this.
Well, yeah.
Sure.
I guess the secondary question, who benefits from it, which is really going to be everybody out there? So, one option would be literally take it out of county funds, or we could split it up proportionately, which would probably be the best way to do it, take some of it from tater or whatever. I know she's shaking her head, but.
It's only thirty-seven hundred.
I know. Thirty-seven hundred bucks, I'm not, I'm not sure.
You could say that was the biggest part of it and bill it to me.
Well, which is probably good. I'm okay with that.
Because the other part of it is, is that shed that we're looking, the storage shed of looking at doing this fall too, it's all on us too to get them out, so.
Because that sounds like you just volunteered.
Since you agreed to that, I'm okay with that, so. Just charge it to get Roden Bridge.
How come Buddy's back there shaking his head?
Is he going like this?
If it was thirty-seven thousand, if it was thirty-seven thousand, it'd be a little different, about thirty-seven hundred. I think he'd swallow that one, so.
Okay. We have that direction.
I'm not coming up again.
I do appreciate it, though. The second item is a procurement update for the board today. If we want to start on the dashboard, we just have a couple of items that are moving forward. The first one is the janitorial services. That one has been published, it'll be published again next week, and we do have a preproposal set for after the fair, when Mr. Kendall is a little more available, on the sixth of August for that one.
On the janitorial services, is it the same as we did before, or are we expanding it?
Uh, so, same buildings. They'll be notified, right, of the differences, right, for the YDC and the event center side of things. There are some frequency changes that Dan has requested to be put in there. There is also, they'll be notified of the potential for the Roden Bridge construction changes that might be coming down the pike.
And did we, did we want to consider including cleaning the restrooms up at the event center in this, or we want to keep those as two separate, like we have this year?
Right. So, that is, that would be an interesting discussion piece to talk about how best. I would like to get with Scott and Dan and, right, ask how they impact Scott's world versus Dan's, right, and get something back before the board. We have a couple weeks before we could add an addendum in there to include them, or currently, they're not. Currently, they're not, right? They're handled through that combined sponsorship payment, right, for this season. But yeah, if the board is interested, let me put together that discussion and have something back before the board, before the pre-bid.
Thoughts on that, before we run down that rabbit hole?
Well, I just wonder, because of the exchange.
The sponsorship.
That if we're kind of two different contracts, actually, I'm not sure that leaving the one, I mean, we could put it in there and, you know, put that on the side and see what their bid comes in at, but I think it's kind of two different things a little bit.
Which I kind of agree with.
Sorry, we could structure it as an alternative and keep it completely separated out. The company would have the ability then to say, right, this is how much we're willing to give, this is what we're expecting to get, right? And we could do it as together, but as an alternative. And then, as the board awards it, they have the capability of awarding the bid with the alternative or canceling the alternative and saying, no, they're not interested in it. Or we keep them separate.
I'm inclined to keep it separate, just because the generals, they have their own schedule and knowing the buildings is, because of up there, because the event throws two or three things in in a week or whatever, to me, the same company could do the same thing as we've already agreed to, but I would keep it. In my opinion, I think it's cleaner if we keep it separate, it's different oversight.
Dan oversees one and Scott the other.
Yeah. And because of that, I, the people who bid on this one could bid on that next year if they were to do it, but treat it, I would treat it completely different for oversight, for purposes and.
Okay. Works for me. I have no problem with that. I just wanted to bring that up and have that discussion. So, leave it as is.
For now, we'll keep them as is. There is one item, though, in regards to the contract for the janitorial that I did want to bring up. Two things I had mentioned before, Christie had a fantastic idea, changing the timing that for budget purposes, running it from October through September is just rough for budgeting purposes. So, the first one's gonna kick off from October 1st, which the other one will end in September. It's gonna run through March 31st, right? So, it's gonna be an eighteen-month contract. There are going to be the legal terms in there that if non-appropriation, cancel for cause or for convenience, all those three phrases will still be in there, but the original one will run for eighteen months, and then they'll have a year's worth of renewals. So, we are looking at potentially, upon funding and satisfactory contract performance, five, well, four and a half years for this set, which is longer than we did last time. But I just wanted to let the board know of the timing, that'll be a little different, but we will still have all of those legal verbiage that we've had and other ones in there. And that will be submitted for official review and approval here in about a week, so then they'll have the opportunity to review that language and let us know if they want anything adjusted in there.
So, the contractual term in March?
Correct, March 31st.
And then we'll have?
So, then in theory, we would back out about three months prior to that and start bidding. We'd have it awarded in February is when I would want that contract awarded, contract signed by the end of February, so I would go to the board like mid-February.
Let me call you on that.
Okay.
And just work through that in my mind.
Okay.
Not to slow the meeting down.
Okay. Perfect. But yes, and we have time to make adjustments to that, too. I'll just put it up here to touch base, and we can make any adjustments that makes sense. Perfect. The next item is, moving forward, is the Roden Bridge roof replacement piece. They met with our architect earlier this week, and an item was found that I wanted to bring before the board. We do have various antennas up there. Oh, sorry, that is saddles.
Dishes.
Dishes, there we go. I used the wrong word and kind of threw Adam off when I talked to him earlier today. Dishes up there. One of them, that's kind of on the side of the building, does CB shortwave radio for the Roden Bridge people. The one that's on top shoots data and network to the landfill is our bigger critical piece that I wanted to bring before the board. It's been looked and reviewed and liked, proposed, putting in a permanent pole, six to eight inches roughly, six to eight feet roughly, of a pole and conduit.
Eight feet.
Eight feet, okay.
He said longer, better.
True, right? More permanent. It'll be more permanent structure. We'd be able to attach different dishes to that, different conduits, and then if we were to mess with anything else on the roof again, we wouldn't interfere with the landfill's connectivity to the network. Adam does have some short-term fixes that will be able to happen while we replace that, but it wasn't part of the original scope, so I wanted to bring it back to the board. I talked to Adam after, you and I discussed, and he would like to recommend that we replace both the one at Roden Bridge and the one at the landfill at the same time, making them again the same system. They do have the equipment to put on him already, so he is estimating short of like three thousand dollars is what he would estimate that it would change, just replacing the roof, but it was outside the scope, so I wanted to bring it forward to the board. If approved, right, the architect would then draw it in, and it would just become a part of the construction project.
So, what they have right now is a stand up there with cinder block on it that is holding it in position. It's over twenty years old. The cables right now run across the top of the roof, and they want to pop a hole in it and have conduit go through this stand pipe so that everything goes down inside. They had planned on changing it out anyway, and so they had already purchased the equipment, but now that we're doing the roof, it's time to make it a permanent fixture instead of a temporary twenty-year fixture.
It's worked for twenty years. They wing another twenty years out.
Adam said, I'm afraid if somebody stepped on those cables, they'd probably turn to powder.
Probably.
The cable or the person?
The cable.
All of the above. I'm okay with that.
I, yeah.
You're right.
We identify the thumb.
We don't know how much the construction project will cost at this time. Ted Booth is in the middle of drawing it. He anticipates having a drawing completed by that first, end of the first week of October, August, sorry. And then I've asked him for a cost estimate also, just to touch base again with Otting to make sure that we have the appropriate funds budgeted for, to work with the project.
Okay.
If that's okay, then I'll touch base with the architect. Okay, okay. To let them know to please draw that in, and I'll have them touch base with Adam to make sure it's the appropriate, and I'll let Adam know that we, with like eight feet. Perfect. Alrighty, ARPA projects.
And then you're talking about, I mean, we're updating everything up there at the landfill.
Oh, yeah.
It's, just makes sense to update now. I mean, we're changing the scales and everything else.
Okay, perfect. We'll get that done. My update for the YDC Event Center project is going well, but we met on the sixteenth of July, so this is about a week out dated, but we have completed the electrical refin. We've trimmed down for plumbing. We have refined the HVAC as well. The taking and texture is completing, and the paint on the south side is complete where the event center will move in, and they are moving forward to get the north side done. Also, the exterior storefront doors have also been installed as well. The ceiling grid is in project and progress. The south side is complete, and they're working on the north side as well. As far as everything they can see, they are on schedule to be complete in the middle of October still, so we're still headed towards that date. I did mention the last time I updated the board, the biggest unknown at this point is the abatement of the demo of the building and paving that parking lot. And sure enough, right, the abatement change order is gonna come in just short of forty-six thousand. They don't have that finalized yet, so I don't have a change order back before the board, but I did send that over to Christie just as soon as I knew about what the dollar was gonna be on that, but that change order will come back before the board. The furniture has arrived at the event center and is waiting to be put together, so they'll wait to arrange that in the next couple of weeks. The move-in has been scheduled for the eighteenth of August, and they'll demo the office on the twentieth.
So, our part with the data, how's that gone?
Oh, done. They were in and out, I believe, in a day and a half and completed our piece, right? They got, yeah.
And saved a ton, like?
Oh, I, yeah.
I mean, good job.
Yeah, thousands of dollars.
So, forty-six thousand for abatement?
Roughly, yes.
What are they, what are they finding?
Okay.
I mean, that's more than just a floor, tile floor, probably.
So, I do not know what all goes into the type of abatement we need, because we're demoing the building, right? We're not gonna move people back in there. On their current proposal, they do, they don't spell it out super well. Sample ID five and six, stairwell vinyl layer one and two. Sample ID twenty, kitchen floor vinyl. Sample ID twenty-six, office drywall surfacing lead samples. Negative pressure containment will be used during the abatement. They.
Cost more to abate it than to tear it down.
So, aren't they anticipating asbestos?
Well, I know a couple guys in the back know how to run a trac-o.
Well, but when they're dealing with asbestos, it doesn't.
Right, but I know they originally didn't.
We have a pile up there that has asbestos in it.
Yeah. That's a lot of money for abatement. It is what it is, but it seems like a lot of money.
Yes, the bulk is for the asbestos there, is about six thousand for lead. We do have the contingency in, for that project, is just short of a hundred and fifty right now. If and when this comes before the board and is approved, I, that's where I would anticipate asking for the funds to be covered for this contingency. But that is the biggest unknown at this point, is that abatement and demo of the building. Do we have any other questions on Event Center, YDC?
Nope.
Okay. Tactical Training Center is wrapping up. They are getting near finished, they'll work through their final inspections. The sheriff's been out of the office for just a little bit, but they'll do their final walkthrough and then work on getting their CO around the end of August. So, that one is just buttoning up beautifully and we're great, and should be, you know, having folks in it here quickly. The exhibit hall, that one, Dan is moving right along with. They anticipate the final electrical inspection happening today, the final on the plumbing should be tomorrow, and the final on HVAC should be next week. They are still working on getting security cameras and wifi throughout the facility, but that will wrap up this week, maybe early next. He does have a cleanup, a construction cleanup crew happening on Saturday, and he would anticipate allowing fair staff to be in there on Thursday to start setting up for the fair. So, everything is moving as well as we expected on that.
Very cool.
Alright, yeah, it'll be great. The boilers, right, are on schedule, and there's no known change orders at this time, and the upgrade on the central controls is proceeding as planned, and they're moving right through their pieces of that project as well. The last one I have is in regards to the Roden Bridge construction project. The board has approved all of the Excel proposals to complete the geotechnical surveys. They are scheduled to happen, so we'll have that as information here in a couple of weeks. And then I just wanted to touch base with the board on next steps on that one, if there was anything. I had asked a couple of weeks ago about doing design services, and we wanted to hold off till after you got back from NICO to have another meeting.
I just didn't hold off until Dan gets these other projects done. I want Dan to look at the design, I want Dan to be involved with that, and he's been a hundred percent involved with this other, so I, that's where I feel. He needs, he needs a break and then step in and help with it.
I don't have any problem with that. Can you cover?
Okay. So, if we look at maybe something end of August, September-ish, to get the group back together to have next discussion.
Why just do it first to September and call it good?
Okay. Okay. Excellent. I, do you believe that's all for me, unless you've got any questions for me?
Sounds good. I mean, Buddy's ready to go.
We've been busy. You've been busy. Everybody's been busy. I mean, look at all these projects.
Appreciate it. Buddy?
Morning.
Good morning.
Do we, do we need to go into executive session? I think we're okay without it today.
I can try to avoid it.
Okay.
Buddy Romerel, Public Works Assistant Director. I'm just looking for an approval for a leave without, leave without pay for a new employee that we got at Roden Bridge. Prior to hiring him, he had a couple vacations scheduled and asked if we'd be able to, if he'd be able to still go on those, and I okayed him to do it, so. On the memo that I sent you guys, I put sick pay down, and I, after talking with Christie, and he took that off and have a new memo here that we need to have signed if you guys approve that.
It's like a situation, sick doesn't qualify. He thought you wanted all leave used, and I said, no, that's not appropriate.
Okay. Yep. Works for me.
It was my agreement. They brought the employee in and, so.
And it's only gonna end up being?
Twenty-six hours.
Yeah.
We've worked out pretty good, actually. We've got a whole bunch of stuff already finished up, and he's starting to get prepared on some of the files and learning the ins and outs of replacing frogs and all that work, so.
Good.
Got some landfill stuff he's gonna start doing here, I think, next week, too, so. Worked out good.
Great. Okay. Then I would move that we approve this leave without pay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, keep. I guess Buddy doesn't need to take that with him anywhere. Alright, Ms. Klauser.
Ms. Klauser, I've now done an ARPA update, so I figured we were about due. We have had a handful of projects wrap up. All of the annex projects are done, so the top three for the fire suppression, HVAC, and the lighting, those are all completed. They were completed mostly within budget, but within budget of what we set for December thirty-one. YDC is still going, as Shanda reported, the boilers are still going. The Sixth Street and East entrances completed. That one came in a little bit over budget. The Roden Bridge blades are done. The metal detectors are done, well, almost done. I guess we're holding on to a little bit of money. The first paving, the paving phase, or second paving phase was done, but the second paving, paving, gosh, I can't say the word, paving phase, we've received the invoice, but that has been paged up, but that one's done as well. The cement polishing is done in the jail, and we're just waiting on D and E pods, Central and the tactical. So, that's that first page. The second, if you look on the back, that is the exhibit hall. Dan is comfortable that we're going to stay within one point seven million dollars. He thinks there might be a little bit of money left over, which might allow him to do the sidewalk. We'll see where that falls in, and it's still kind of within the scope of the project.
And I talked to him about that when I went down and looked at the facility. At that very front door, we have grass, and I'd like to put a sidewalk to the street. Don't know what the city of Downey will end up doing. They'll put a sidewalk out front or whatever, but that'll at least dial handicap accessibility with the wheelchair right up to that front door.
I mean, I see you would go ahead and extend it parallel to the road so they could pull up and park next to that instead of driving up on the grass.
Along that line, they're gonna come back and reduce some concrete in the building.
So, we're holding a hand check.
And so, I told him, why not put, you know, an eight-foot sidewalk out at the same time if they're gonna have trucks down there?
Pending funds if we're within one point seven, if we're gonna be outside that one point seven, it would be nice if he'd come present that, just to make sure we have funds. At this point, if you look at the bottom half of the second page, we only have a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars on unobligated pilt. I think we're okay. We still have contingency for the YDC building, but until all these projects are done, I'm a little hesitant to buck it up too much more, until we know that things are done before we start adding additional scope.
Yeah.
Again, you can choose to add additional scope as long as you would like, as long as.
Well, and I, that wouldn't be much. I mean, it's just a.
I think he mentioned like thirteen thousand, maybe.
Yeah.
And that should, he still thinks that's gonna fit within the one point seven, so. He, he's conservative.
Oh, I know he is. I'm like, okay.
When he has projects, as long as he and Eric are communicating, it's usually not a bad thing, so. But that's the ARPA update. Looks like, I mean, we just have a couple still outstanding. We might need to, and it didn't occur to me as we were doing the future recommendation, we might need to add some pilt money for next year as well, just as some of these projects wrap up, gives us some options, but we'll talk about that next week. So, that's my update. Easy.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further questions on that before we move on?
Just thank you. Like I say, people have asked, what's the hardest thing we've done? And I think one of the hardest things we've done is, is actually spent pilt money, ARPA money, to make the right choices and decisions, and I think that we've benefited the county as a whole with the decisions and everybody's effort, so thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move forward. We have a volunteer rental agreement from Todd Mager over at the juvenile, at the juvenile justice with, at the village. I looked through that, did it have anything legally, any issues with it?
No.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Not good to me. I'll make the motion, we go ahead and.
Approve that, okay? We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that brings us to Commissioner Moser.
Well, I got a couple of things, and it's kind of been talked about already today, talking about our employees and the benefits and what we do for them. After traveling cross-country, I would like to change our policy that the county would pay airfare to Comfort Plus. We don't go above that, but Comfort Plus, when you're on a plane for five or six hours, it makes a difference. And if it's in the budget and people have budgeted for it in their travel expense, I would like to see the county change that policy so that we cover Comfort Plus.
I'll go first because I was a bigger guy. I initially was excited about this, then I started diving in, doing some more research on it, and I, I don't think it's probably the, the right thing to do. The state of Idaho's travel policy is coach or cheaper. The national policy is coach or cheaper. And I couldn't find any other counties that had a policy that would say one way or the other. So for me, I've just been using my own funds to upgrade, and I, I think that's probably the best look, so. I'm kind of opposed, which again, I'm shocked at that, but I am.
And I, I have seen mixed emotions because I have upgraded at times, and man, I'm grateful for it, and sometimes I haven't, and it, it's a luck of a draw who you get to see. You may be sitting with somebody that needs to be on Weight Watchers. And there's not much you can do about that, and, but I think that could be, I guess, if we give them the option to do it, but at their own budget, their own personal request, how much would it be? How much is it? I haven't done it for a while. What's the difference between coach?
$75 a leg.
Well, it depends on where you're going in the flight.
Well, I have two legs.
I can, I can just tell you that I, my flight got canceled. I had upgraded with my own money to Comfort Plus, and I had to call Delta and get a reimbursement, and it was $75 for myself and $75 for my wife to come back from Philadelphia.
My ticket was about a $150 upgrade.
Round trip?
Round trip.
Well, no, yeah, for the, for the whole ticket, so yeah, $75 a leg.
And I've paid anywhere from $40 to $70, so it depends on where you go, because I personally will upgrade myself if my husband goes with me.
Yeah.
Like I say, I, we just made this flight. I, I think that it's one of the deals for our employees that if they have it in their budget, they're doing something for us, make it as comfortable as possible.
I don't have a problem against it at all. Don't have a compelling reasoning to, as I say, if it's, if, it's like paying a standardized mileage rate that the government sets. And I guess my only question of it is, being conservative by nature, is we going to have any heartburn from the state or complaints from other counties if that one gets out? What's the downside of the future of, i- if we paid for it out of county funds, which is, if you take it out of your department, it's still county funds.
It is.
Or do we just allow them to do it at their own cost? You know, is there a hybrid there that? Because I know there's a reason why there is a, there is a national per diem rate established to prevent abuse.
And that's something that I did not look at was if GSA has a, has any.
I, I didn't see anything pop up about flights.
Okay.
From, from a national level.
That's something I've never looked at.
Just the national policy was coach or less.
Okay, okay.
Because I, I researched business and/or Comfort Plus, and I couldn't find anything. And granted, it was a fairly cursory search, but there wasn't anything anywhere that on, on the record to approve that. So. But again, I'm my kid and you, as a bigger guy, I appreciate the space.
Yeah. Got to shoulder to shoulder sometimes with the wrong people. Doesn't make a difference, so. Do we allow the department to pay it out of their budget and authorize it out of their budget? Are we going to be treading on any thin ice there? I would, my question too is, do we, do we do one where we allow the department to override that?
I think, I think if it's in their budget, in their travel budget, it's at their discretion.
Are we violating anything, Scott, with that approach?
Nothing specifically. It's just mainly political question.
Not that I know of. Usually that's just governed by your own policy.
Correct.
On that, so.
The only thing I ask is if you keep with the current policy and you're going to allow employees to pay their personally to upgrade, I just need flight or seats so that I can confirm. Because it doesn't always say comfort when we're reimbursing for flights or paying for flights directly. But I know which seats are comfort, so if we could require departments, and we've tried to get departments to turn in what their seat number is so that we can confirm it's not upgraded, I just need to clarify that in policy. If you allow for comfort, then I would still ask for that so that we don't have people one-upping it to first class, which I can't imagine we would.
There's a substantial difference in.
Yeah, every time you walk by, you go, really? So my question is, is it going to cause the county a lot more unnecessary grief to have to try to track down that extra information for comfort?
No, all I need is people just to give me their actual seat numbers.
So it's going to require, it's going to require more due diligence of that department or?
Honestly, I need that right now. I should be getting it right now to ensure that people aren't upgrading and.
And turning it in.
Do you want to make a motion?
Well, do you want time to think about it? I mean, I just, this is the first time I've brought it up. Think about it.
I don't know if my line of thinking is going to change one way or another with any, what, what new information would we be? If it's GSA, if they don't care about it, it's going to be a county policy more than anything else.
The only thing I mentioned, Ernie, is when we have our problem solving courts that send a handful of people to trainings, they're sending, you know, 10 people, sometimes 12 people, and they're not just county employees. They're state employees, they're city employees.
Are this, will they be governed by their own travel policy?
Not if we pay for it. So, but if they've got funds, I'm just, you could potentially, that would be the only place that it would probably significantly impact, because if you're just doing a handful of flights per department per year.
And that's why I, I state that if it's in their budget. I'm okay for that. And then, you know, watch it and see, maybe we'll reverse that, you know, if it just looks too expensive or, or there's misuse of it, then I guess you can always pull that back, change policy again.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we upgrade policies for flights that the county will pay up to Comfort Plus as long as the funds are in the budget.
Available funding.
Available funding.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I will, I need to do a revamp of our policy, but for now, what I'll do is just send out an email and say, "Commissioner has updated the policy for flights. Comfort Plus is now allowed." Please confirm when you're sending, when you're booking a flight to give all information to a seat, and then I'll just include that in the policy.
The second item I have is that we have a policy of elected officials not going to conferences out of state if they're not running for reelection. So next year, Weir, I would like to go to Weir, I have in the past, and so I'm asking for permission to attend Weir in 2026.
I'm actually okay with it. I've thought about this quite a bit, and again, because you have been attending Weir fairly religiously the last few years, and we're still going to get a few months worth of work out of you. If Weir was in December, I would probably say no. I wouldn't ask. But I think there is some value to that conference, and where you have been doing that, I, I think I'm okay with that.
I'm good with approving it as an exception, not, not changing the policy.
Correct.
And that's why I'm kind of ahead of time so that we put it in the budget.
Which is individual by individual cases on that, so.
Okay, so.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, claims agenda. Any questions on the claims agenda?
Only the one that I presented to give you an answer on.
Yes, so that $34,000, what happened is with the changeover with Luma and people paying fines and fees to bonds and fines, the wood court fees have been being deposited into the drug court gateway fund. And so that is just a check to.
It's just a transfer.
Where they were supposed to be.
Okay, because sometimes you don't read that as a transfer, you read it as an invoice.
Well, we don't necessarily do transfers. We do, we write checks out.
Which isn't expensive.
So it's a little bit cleaner. Do you want me to bring that up?
Did you want to?
Okay.
Have a conversation?
Yesterday, we finished up financials, so the audit is officially complete. I just need to check with the board and see if you would like to do a exit conference like we've done in the past, where Whitfield will come and present any information findings or information regarding the audit and the financials.
I don't think it would be a very fun conversation, to be honest.
But it actually shows good transparency if somebody does care. And maybe watching it or whatever it is, even though as boring as that is. Can they do the Cliff's Notes version?
He usually has a pretty decent version of that. So I'll reach out to him, he's gone today and tomorrow. I'll reach out to him, and he's going to pay to get with that important schedule in time to come do that. And then, most likely, the clerk will try to plan a meeting with the board as a follow-up to next year's audit services.
Did your, did our streak break this year?
No, I have until the 31st to submit it to JPOA. Next year, we need to not ask for extensions. They reiterated while I was at JPOA that they're not just doing extensions willy-nilly like they did for COVID, and just because we can't get information from our auditors isn't sufficient to get extensions.
They know that.
The discussion won't be quite as bad then if the streak isn't broken, but it will still be.
And.
I'm, I'm.
Discussing.
Not a wreck, so, yes. I would, I would be very disappointed to lose our 31-year streak of getting that certificate just because.
Somebody else? Okay.
They know that. They know what the timeframe is when they sign the engagement letter. It's not our fault that they don't have the staff or the resources to take care of it. That's my opinion, so.
One other quick side note on claims and invoices. We had 236 checks this time. Normally, our run is about 110. We have 556 invoices and our average is usually 215, so.
Is that because we weren't here? Is that what caused that? Oh, so it is.
Another one.
Please don't do that again. Is that what that was?
Let me tell you, the way my wife goes on vacation, nobody does her job, and she has three times that many when she comes back after a week.
Yeah. That's, that's where I see you to handle. We make sure in our office that I have duplicate and overlapping employees that can compare for each other so that that doesn't happen from offside.
With that?